We're going to call this meeting to order at 6:32. And all members of the present standing, question?
What I believe is the life of the United States of America, which is a republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, limited and justice.
Welcome, Chris. Justin, are you ready for Jake?
Um, not for just doing the field stuff. If you do, if you want all the right things, then yeah, he has some things about the purchase.
Okay, well, we'll start with the general reports first and we'll put you in last. The council meeting minutes for April 1st, 2019.
I make a motion to accept them as well.
Any discussion? All those in favor? unanimous? Financial reports?
I make a motion that we accept financial reports.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous?
I'm sorry, can't interrupt. I missed the first. Make the non-waiving. Thank you for.
A report on standing committees and departments?
Uh, Historical Society, Eric is trying to copy all our fragile newspapers with the help of the State of Maine, but their machine is broken, but he's gonna continue on with that for fragile. I'll let Justin talk about the historical, uh, the rectifier and I'll let Nancy talk about the, is Nancy here?
Yes.
Oh, Nancy. I'll let her talk about the library when it comes up. Anything you want to say, Justin, about the rectifier?
Jake?
Yeah, there's, um.
Come on in.
Just where you're going. What's going on? I mean, it's been a super rainy, cold spring. The sun is beautiful. Really enjoy it. Right now, we've started the games, started games, uh, last Monday. And, um, we're one of the only towns that actually hasn't had it right now. So it's been, it's been really great. So we've got, we have a couple going on right now. So I really appreciate you moving me into.
Okay, we're going to move 8.4 use of ball fields. Oh, 8.3, let's do that. 8.3 recreation purchases?
Uh, do ball field first and then.
Okay. 8.4 use of ball fields. We'll do that first. Um, so the reason why we're here, we received a complaint, um, asking to use the ball fields, from what I understand from you, um, the ball field, the Coleman field, is used for games, but not practices. Correct?
Correct.
Um, and this complaint wants to use the fields for practices also. So if you want to speak to that, um, then you can speak to that. Is that okay?
I, I guess like more clarification of what the complaint was.
Okay, so Jake?
So I guess my complaint is, I mean, if I know and I'm just finding out I'm getting into the majors level, that practices haven't been allowed on that field for three years, or it would have been here three years ago. That field's always been for Little League, and which is majors now, and, uh, all of a sudden they can't practice on it. And I don't understand what the hell softball is like, all summer long, ball all through the seasons. And, you know, they've got excuses that they're trying to wear and tear and stuff like that. Scientific, well, there's nothing scientific about kids playing baseball on baseball fields that the town put so much money in and so much effort into. If the kids aren't allowed to play on it, then what's the point even have? So I understand this year that it's more difficult because we got the Pratt field. But there's absolutely no reason in this world that the kids can't practice on the playing field that they play their games on. I mean, that is baseball. Baseball is to be played on grass fields, okay? We're practicing on the dirt field. The ball's rolling off. If we just had an injury tonight, we've had four since we've been playing on that. It comes off grass much different than it comes off dirt. That's why it's baseball. We shouldn't be playing baseball on baseball fields. Now, why we're in this position, I have no idea. The Pratt field should have been, everything should have been ready to go before it's torn out to begin with. And it should have been done as a spring project. If that was the case, it should have been done. Summer or fall, it would have all year to, to be ready for the next season. So here we are, in this predicament, where we can't even play on that field. There was four games played on that field last week. We were being one of the last ones, and that field looked absolutely perfect after. There was nothing wrong with that field. It's one of the best in the state. When a field's better, it's been able to be used more, not less. That's why you do it. So if we're gonna spend the money, I propose you let the kids use it. If not, then eliminate all adult use from it. Then they can rest the entire year. And if you're not gonna let the kids use it, I propose, also propose, you start public guards from home and it's kind of right for having to take care of that. And I guess that you stop letting them spend money on equipment that's not needed to minimize the fields. I mean, that's, I'm not gonna sit here and read everything, but it's just ridiculous kids can't use that field. You can read whatever else I wrote.
I did read it, Jeff.
Can I get a copy of this? I didn't get, I didn't get a copy of that other one. So, you know, I'm gonna respond.
Yep.
Um, so first of all, um, yes, no doubt, it has been one of the best fields in the area, and a lot of credit goes to the hundreds and if not thousands of volunteer hours that have gone into maintaining it, thinking about it five years ago when we decided that it needed renovations and all the effort that went into that. So that includes irrigation, it includes a field lift so that it can drain properly. It includes a sod, engineered infield mix that allows us to, um, have the dirt dry faster, have the, the field play more true, um, all those things. You know, we fixed outfield as well, received that. So there's been a lot of time, effort, energy, and, and actually donation and sponsor raise money, so not from the tax payer base. So the good thing about all the money that, that has been put into the field is it's all been sponsor driven and donated, donated to us, either via hard money, hard cash, or in-kind services. In-kind services, you know, by our calculations, it's somewhere between $50,000 and $75,000 of in-kind services to our complex. So we've been really fortunate to have some great people that be able to participate there. So a couple of things where I'd like to, uh, say that we haven't had practice, oh, Jurassic Park, we haven't had practice on the field, is a direct result of the, uh, spring that we had where it wasn't over 60 degrees until Friday. It rained almost every day. We actually didn't get on the field until, uh, April 22nd, which was the first day we had practice outdoors. So we were one of the, uh, first, uh, towns to, Oxford had a couple of fields that were open earlier than ours, but in lieu of the, the grass, uh, in the outfield and the sod and infield, not being capable of withstanding even a step, and you could have seen that had you walked out there, you could just see the steps, um, all through the mud. So we had to actually go back and fix that first. And then as far as like practicing, once we get into about the, historically, once you get to the middle of May, um, to the end of May, we do, actually do a lot more practices on there and teams practice. The reason that we held off on allowing teams to practice ahead of time until, uh, still not this week, it'll probably be next week, is specifically so that the field is able to completely dry out and, and be used, because on a practice, the whole idea of a practice is you have continuous repetition over and over, and so it happens, you get a lot of wear and tear. So if you look at pictures from last year and you look at it this year, there's areas in the mound where during practices last year during, during rookies and minors, because we didn't have a majors team to your point, last year, we could do that, actually, uh, cause, you know, we actually have to go this year and, um, we're gonna cut a whole track from the mound to home plate because it's no longer a round circle. It's kind of oval, and that's because we wore all of the, the grass out. So in, all those things like are calculated into what we did. Then we add, um, Atlantic Turf Care, Turfis, which is the company that comes in to actually give us, um, you know, the dirt and gives us best practices, because they do Haddlock Field. They tell us, you know, you really should wait until you get into the season to be able to dry out and let that happen. This is one of the latest years we've had that. So in lieu of being able to practice outdoors, we actually did more time in the zone up in, in Norway. As far as, um, the Babe Ruth Field goes, I completely dispute the fact that it's not a good baseball field because, um, we put as much time, effort, and care into the Babe Ruth Field as we do any of the other fields. In fact, this past weekend, we had a travel team rent it as a result of it being one of, because Pettingill and Auburn, that's taking care of a lot of public works there and paid employees, it was not ready to go. So we actually had paid games. We really have, um, University of Farmington softball team actually come too. Obviously softball and baseball are different, but, um, the infield is, is true. We drag that, you know, two to three times a week. We also moved the portable mound, um, to be able to go to the Babe Ruth Field. We would have done that earlier had we had enough, um, support from, uh, the community. We had to move cleanup day a couple times, so we didn't have enough people there to do all the activities that we needed to do. So then we had instead of 100 parents, we had about 50. So we didn't get all the tasks completed. So to Jake's credit, he actually went down on Tuesday and helped us install that, which was, which was great. That gave us now two fields with portable mounds. So the idea is that we're not trying to keep kids off playing or you from practicing. In fact, the night that you've asked to practice, which came from your head coach, was on a Monday where we have games, so we have a game schedule, starting, starting on April 29th, which we've only been the second week that we're outside, the second, the start of the second full week, was our first game. And we had, uh, four games last week, and again, we were the only team, only town that didn't have a rain out last week because our fields were able to dry, even though it was wet every single day. So the challenge in coming here today to talk about it, you know, um, nobody heard about the complaint until it got to the town, so he didn't go, you know, unfortunately kept the request or the complaint, didn't go to the head coach, the director, or me, which then I'd bring it to Ashley and then you. So now we put a lot of time, effort, and energy into dealing with this, when, you know, common sense would say that it was really wet outside and that's why we're trying to limit how much is out there. As far as softball goes, and adult softball, so two things about that. One, we don't have a spring softball that doesn't start until after all the kids play. So, you know, and we'll rent it out for travel and those kinds of things, so kids do still get to play on it. In fact, we allowed All-Stars to practice on it last year. So when it comes to like adult softball, two things you really should know about adult softball is, one, it brings in about $10,000 to $12,000 for the, for the town, um, and helps us run facilities, and we have two seasons, so one in the summer and then one in the fall. And that helps to actually go and pay for the engineered dirt, the sod, the time, effort, and energy, um, and also, uh, you know, give us extra stuff so that we need like carryover for basketball or soccer or those things, then it gives us a little bit of, of extra money as well. So last thing about the Pratt field, we actually toured up last fall with the hopes and intentions to get that completed, but if you remember, it got really cold in October. It never had that Indian summer kind of thing, so it never cooled off, it never warmed up enough for us to actually be able to fix that. So the irrigation is ready to go. We, or, I'm sorry, the field is ready to be installed with irrigation, and, um, you know, you're, make a great point about the, the opportunity to do it in the spring, except for we didn't have the, the purchasing ability, um, to actually pay for any of those, order those things, because the town and us, 8.3 on the agenda, is to cover our PO issue right now and getting things paid for. So I, you know, mentioned to you on Wednesday that, you know, we really should redirect some of the energy and, um, effort to say that we're not there to practice, to be to the town, to say, hey, we really need to put some pressure on, on them so we can make sure we get all the stuff ordered and we get the equipment that we need in order to make those things happen, which then allows us to use Pratt Field as a practice field, which is what we've always done. So hopefully that clarifies each one of those elements or questions or concerns or, you know, complaints that came forward. Are there any questions?
Yeah, one real basic. That's the only field that has grass infield. How come? I know the Pratt Field's doing work.
So, good question. So the reason we have, uh, we allow the, the, put dirt, uh, like softball field and Babe Ruth Field, and we're considering with the Pratt Field, is because we can make them convertible, to make them use for baseball or softball. So we ordered two portable mounds, so any one of our four fields, uh, can be turned into a baseball, a baseball field. So the good thing about that is it allows us to potentially put the complex out there. So one, one hopeful thing that we'll have with Ashley is help us run tournaments, which then brings in money. So to our playoffs, when we have playoffs or majors or minors, we can host the whole tournament here. We weren't able to do that last year, because what we have to do is spend, uh, five hours per field to build a proper mound. So we don't do that anymore. Now we have the only certified Cal Ripken mound in our league. But we have two of them.
But the, the infield's are gonna stay dirt?
Yes, infield will stay dirt. Um, you know, go around the state, there's a number of fields, like Pismo Beach in Oxford's their best field, that's a dirt field. So there's a number of others that are like that as well. So it, what it allows us to do is we can now host softball or baseball at any one of our fields.
Good.
No, I just wanted, can I?
Yeah.
To, you know, just, I'll give you a little history, because I have been involved in this thing for quite a while. And these springtime issues didn't used to be an issue years ago, because all the baseball and all the softball never started until we joined Cal Ripken. Because if you guys remember, I mean, Jake probably does, I mean, you played through the summer. So none of these springtime weather issues ever came to light, because by the time you started playing balls, it was about the time school got out, just before school got out. So you played all summer. Well, then we switched baseball. This was years ago. I think this is back when Bill Bickford and Jim Ochsman was here. Switched baseball into Cal Ripken, because everybody wanted their summers off. That way, the kids that wanted to play travel, the kids that wanted to play All-Stars, could do that in the summertime. They could move on and go to All-Stars. But it enabled the families that didn't want to go into the summertime, wanted to go away, their kids weren't committed to playing all summer long. That worked out really, really well for a few years, because girls softball played in the, uh, spring, I mean, it's played in the summer, and then Cal Ripken played in the spring when they swapped it over. So you didn't have all these field issues that you do now, because now you've got multiple teams competing for the same fields. Then they swapped girls softball over to Cal Ripken, same reason, they wanted to free up the summer, so these kids weren't playing all summer. Then the kids that wanted to play All-Stars, they could go on and they could play during the summer. The kids that wanted to play travel, they could go play summer. So we've got probably the most unique opportunity out of any of the towns around here to have fields. We've put a lot of thought, a lot of effort, we've done, seeked a lot of professional advice, we've tried to get most of it for free, um, to make these fields and make this facility the best we can. For, like Justin said, if you look at this from a business perspective, there's times of the year when these fields aren't being used anymore, that you can use these fields, which we've done. The history shows we've done it. We've brought in a lot of outside money, money that has helped subsidize all our programs here and improve, and hopefully improve our programs for the kids. If that answers some of that. I just wanted to address adult softball. There is no summer adult softball. There was no summer adult softball last year. We've had multiple people contact me about summer adult softball this year, and we've told them, until we get the field straightened out, there'll be no adult softball, until we get the Pratt field going, and we can, the kids come first on all the fields. The Pratt field, I'll address that one next. The Pratt field last year was ready to go. I went down there, Daryl and I, Daryl works for me. We went down there, we stripped it all out, we got it ready to go, we did all the groundwork, it's ready to have the, uh, irrigation system put in it, and it was ready to have the sod put on it. Because that field, the infield's gonna be a sod field. It's gonna be a grass infield, but there is no sense spending the money on grass if you don't have irrigation, because by mid-July, it'll all be dead in it. So it's all set up to go. It was set up to go last fall, and if any of you remember, last fall, we got a ton of rain. And right after we got all the rain, we got a cold snap and froze everything out. The guy from the irrigation said that he wasn't gonna go on the field, because it was too muddy to put it in, because he'd make too much of a mess, and the same with the sod company up to frolicer. So that's all on schedule to happen this spring. We're probably three weeks behind just because of the weather. So a couple more weeks, like Justin said, that Coleman field should open up so we can start using that more. There's a lot of winter kill out there. I mean, if any of you have gone down and looked at the fields, there's a fair amount of winter kill out there on the grass. We're just trying to get it so that that grass will take hold and start to go a little bit, and then, I mean, we can use it all the time.
Well, that's not what I was told. It was no practice period. And if you're gonna get winter kill while the kids are practicing on it, you gotta remember that this season is only June 6th.
I know.
So these kids get no time on this field, and it should be their field. I mean, I really don't give a shit about adult softball at all. I mean, if, if you're gonna have it looking good, it should be for the kids, but if they can't use it, then what is the point?
Well, Jake, there's nothing we'd like to have them do is use it every single night, but you gotta, you gotta preserve your asset.
And you gotta understand that adults are gonna ruin that, put more wear and tear on it any time of the year than the kids are in spring. I can go down there and walk right across that right now, and it's fine. Kids could use that every single day, and it would be absolutely fine. Probably the wear and tear around the mound and everything else was probably from softball. They take that on off, they step up, and they step on it. I don't know. I think it's for the kids. Let them use it. If there's a little bit of wear and tear from kids, we fix it and let it heal. And don't worry about these adults. Adults can play, and the softball field, Babe Ruth Field, the Derrickan Field, they can play over here, with the Derrickan Field. It's baseball. We need to play baseball on grass fields.
So, Justin, are you, are you seeing that practices are allowed on that field when you feel the field is ready?
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no other game scheduled?
Correct. So in the, in the order of precedence is, you have games, no matter what level, take precedence first. If it's open another night and there's some practice, to Jake's point, like, you know, I mean, it's, the grass is, you have to, you have to let it come back. We've only been outside for two weeks. And so, I mean, if anybody's, this was the first week most people did lawn, walked on their own, on their own lawn. So the baseball fields are no different, you know, like, they're, walking across the outfield, um, you know, it was wet up until just this weekend. So, I mean, that, that was where we were coming from, and, you know, like Jake said, we spent an awful lot of time and have experts come out to show us how to maintain and manage the fields properly, so we'd be getting the most out of it. You know, like, like Jake said, we're not even, it's not about softball, it's not about adults, that's not the point. The point is that, uh, we have a tremendous asset that we spent a ton of time, effort, volunteer time, effort, and energy on, and then went out and raised money so we could do all this stuff, so we could have this asset. Last year, we were outside in the middle of April, early April, so that was a huge difference. So, you know, that, that's a change. The other thing is, this year we have, um, we have four teams. We have a major team. We haven't had a majors team in probably three years. All of our kids have always gone to another town, so that caused another scheduling conflict. And so, you know, Monday nights is not, that was, that was a request from the head coach for practice, because they practice, they play on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And Monday nights are game nights for our rookies, and so they get, they get precedence for their game.
So does anybody have a question? Because I'll, I'll probably answer it if they do. Because I mean, I guess what's frustrating from the rec committee's point of view is, we should all be on the same team here. We should all be going in the same direction. And sometimes you, you just have to make adjustments based on the weather and everything else, but I mean, we're not on the rec committee because I don't want some kids playing on that field. That's why we do what we do, so the kids get to play on a decent field. I mean, all the stuff that we do is driven towards those kids' programs and improving them at the least amount of cost to the town.
Are you all set, Jake?
I mean, yeah, if that's what I was told to begin with, that we're gonna be allowed to practice on that field, which is, that's fine.
And you're okay?
That's not, absolutely not what I was told.
Okay, but you're good now?
As long as we can practice on that field, actually. You know, what I'm saying, what I told him at the time, I told him, we're flexible. If there's other open nights, we can move our practices, we can practice on the field. I know there's other days, I mean, mornings, we can practice anytime, and it's not gonna hurt that much.
But the, the rec committee, we just, we gotta have the ability to try to make adjustments depending on what the circumstances are. So, I mean, because I can tell you, I went down and dragged the fields first thing to sprint, and it took me longer to fix all the stuff on the fields, where different people had started going down there and they'd walked across the infield in the mud and the frost wasn't even out of the ground. So you had footprints in it that's deep, and nobody sees the four hours per field of time that we're down there trying to fix that. But everybody wants to get on, and the first warm day you got in the frost, I mean, the floor isn't out of the ground.
Well, maybe now that you have Ashley, you guys can communicate where you are, maybe weekly?
So, that was, the other thing that's a little bit frustrating, is that she answered the initial request immediately and exactly she came right, she had all that information and answered the meeting.
Okay, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, you guys know the fields, and, and how many teams, extra teams you've got this year, you know what your fields look like, how about, I mean, you've done a good job at communicating with people, how about communicating when you get to this season, this is what's happening and why?
I don't mean to go, yeah, I did that. So we also had a, a full program meeting where all the coaches were there. I've been in communication with all the head coaches about all of those things, right? So as, as, and we had two baseball specific directors that were doing that on a daily basis throughout the whole spring. So we actually started that in February, with, with going to in the zone and opening those things up, so we could start the season earlier, because we knew we had more teams. So, you know, again, going back to, uh, yeah, if his team goes out and practices this week, right, his team may not hurt it, but then I've got three other teams that come in and also have that same right to be able to practice. So if you say, you know, yes to them all, and now that adds, you know, in the meantime, right, so this is spring, we're only, this is the start of the third week. So we start Monday, the 22nd is the first day of the year outside for anything. And, I mean, to say that, considering the spring and the winter and all the snow and all, and how, how early the fall ended and winter began, I mean, man, I thought we did a really good job. So the, the communication piece was certainly there, and you could ask the, the head coaches about that or the directors, because they were the ones that managed that. So the challenge, the difficulty was that, you know, I heard about it from the town, it didn't come through those, those chain of command, if you will. So that was, that was pretty frustrating. And to say that we didn't have communication, you know, I had 80 people in the gym that day to go through, hey, we're not practicing in the Coleman field because this, this and that. We're gonna do, we're gonna be on Babe Ruth Field, because this gives us the best chance for it. The only, I mean, even the, there is one thing that came up about not having a mound for the first practice outdoors. That afternoon, when I found out, we, we installed it. He installed it. He went there with a member of the rec committee and did it. So, I mean, things happened very, very quickly. And we're not, again, we're not saying they're not gonna be able to practice, and it was communicated, we will be able to use all the fields. So the challenge, looking through some of these things, you know, categorically, they're, you know, it's false, incorrect information, and that made it really difficult, because then you heard about it everywhere. I spent more time on this last week, like answering incorrect stuff that was out there than I have for anything else.
I always sounded the impression that he got that information from you.
No, I, I called Jake and gave, I told him exactly what, what was going on. I said that.
You told me no practices. We haven't practiced on it three years, and there's no practices.
Correct, not, not in May. You have not practiced on it in May.
That's not what you said. Zero practices, that's what you said.
Right.
So don't lie.
I'm not.
Okay, we're not getting into that.
The fact of the matter is, the kids are over at the end of this month, and, and you might as well not have a field, because baseball's enough.
Yeah, but you can.
You can say it's muddy, you can say it's coming out three years old, but that's not true. It's not even close to true. That water, how do they have any standing water on that field? Right after the storm melted, of course there was, but that field is probably fine right now. Yeah, there's some winter.
So, are you the only baseball coach here?
They're at practice right now.
All the rest of the head coaches are at practice?
On our team, yes.
No, I mean, all the teams.
I don't know if they are.
Oh.
I have two other games right now.
Oh.
I'm in a game right now.
Well, I just wondered why they weren't here complaining.
They, they haven't complained at all.
I don't.
The bottom line, we're trying to do the best job we can to make sure that we protect the asset of the town, but also make that available for the town to use in all the ways we can. And that's as simple as it gets. I mean, we don't just make these decisions, uh, just like that, out of the spur of the moment. I mean, we just don't. I mean, this is a very well thought out situation, where we've gone out and seek professional help on what's the right thing to do and the wrong thing to do. So we're trying not to do so much damage to it that it takes a long period of time to repair it, but you get two or three days like this, you'll be golden. I mean, it dried up so much out there today compared to two days ago, but, but that's one of the reasons we have the weather problems, is because they've swapped the leagues, the Cal Ripken league, and they do it in the springtime now.
Okay, I think he needs a question, that they can have practices when the field is available, so I think we've answered the question. I think we will resolve the issue, I believe, so we can move on?
We can. But, I mean, are we doing, are we doing the scheduling for the field or somebody else?
No, you guys are.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
All right, so Jake can handle the.
Yes.
It's me and Max already. It's me and Max already.
All right, look to eight point three recreation purchases.
First one in your package is the thirsty turf for practice. For fifty-six through, fifty-six thirty-five. And we look for approval from the council level with the exemption for professional services and hourly contracts. This is the irrigation, yeah?
This is the irrigation for practice field, the one that we can't get on. That, and I guess, yes, there's us. And I'll try to answer any questions or I'll announce them because, and then I've got a couple of questions, so.
Do these, does this always have to come before town council meeting?
This is the first time we've ever come here, for this.
Okay, so what is happening right now?
For the purchasing policy, anything over five thousand that the administration can't approve themselves goes to the council for approval, for individual one-off purchases.
The rec committee, the rec committee had voted about a year ago to spend this money and do this. That's why we were doing the field last fall. And then, as the position is changing here, Ashley has hired, the town council's doing more with this. The town's taking care of the checking account. This money, we thought we had it all approved last time when we came in and did that budget, when the town council approved the budget, because we had it in the budget. I mean, everything was in the budget, the practice field reconstruction. So, anyways, I can't, I've got them scheduled for the fifteenth because that's when they can, the earliest I can get here now to do this. But I needed to read myself about time that if for some reason you guys don't approve it, that I can cancel. But the irrigation has to get done before the fall. But I guess the sod's okay because the sod's under five thousand dollars, so.
And that upapproved, and that was. Anything for the town purchasing policy, any department, anything over five thousand is beyond the manager's authority to approve. So, even if it's in the municipally approved budget by voters or the council's approved the rec budget, individual purchases over five thousand have a secondary approval process.
Which?
Isn't it?
And this whole thing is new to us. So, we're going through this for the first time, as I think they are going through it for the first time because I think rec has a tremendous amount of moving parts. And we've always just been able to run it. But, I mean, all this money that we're talking about right now, this was all private funds. None of this money was raised through taxation of the town. So, it's all private funds, but now that Zach's come on, we have to go through and get the approval of the town to do it. If that answers that?
Yeah.
That answers that correctly?
No, that change was started before I was hired, but.
Okay, all right. It must have been when Kareem was here. Okay, all right. I'll rescind that statement.
But you didn't spend more than five thousand before?
Yeah, we could, we had our meeting. We voted on what we wanted to do. And we never spent a dime until we raised that money to do that, so. We always spent money that we already had. And that's where, how we already get donations for things. And that's where, like, the signs that are down there, that puts money in, like Jake was talking about, the adult softball, we run that league, that puts stuff in. We did do dances, do fundraises, do tournaments. So, that's all outside money that comes in and a hundred percent of it goes back into the comp wars.
I made the motion to improve the five thousand sixty-three fifty-five dollars for the irrigation system for the practice field. One second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous?
Thank you. Second one is the maybe I, um, grader irrigator. Do you want to give a breakdown of that?
Yeah, it's a field groomer and.
A photo in your package.
It's the field groomer that was in the original budget. Again, we voted a year ago to get this once we had the money for it. I'd like to amend that if I can, because they've come out with a new field groomer. They've come out with an upgraded version. And the price of the upgraded version is three thousand twenty-eight dollars more money than what we put in originally, because originally we put in thirty-three seven seven two.
So, it's close to forty?
No.
The other way?
Yeah, please just hear me out. Just, I'll go through the whole thing. So, anyways, thirty-three seven seven two was the original number. And that was in the original budget that was presented to the town, just the rec budget, not the budget through the budget committee. The new one, I was able to negotiate a price of thirty-six eight hundred on that one. That one comes with some extra attachments, so that some of the things that we hire done now, we will be able to do in-house, so we'll be able to save real money. Ashley knows one, because we paid Atlantic Turf Care to do all the spraying, because we spray for techs. We don't, they do. They spray for techs down there every spring. And they take care of all the fields and they were taking care of the aeration, which is one of the most important things, aeration of water on anything grass. So, we had a net savings just from Atlantic Turf of not having to pay them this year from what we had budgeted. We had fifty-four thirty budgeted. And their bill without the aeration and the discount we were able to negotiate came to forty-one sixty-seven. So, we had a real money savings of twelve sixty-three right there. And then, on the practice field, the reconstruction of the Pat Pratt field, we can save about two thousand dollars because we'll be able to shim the infield ourselves so we won't have to have the outfield and the infield, so we won't have to pay somebody else to come in here and do it. And then, on the girls softball field, the Coleman field and the Babe Ruth field, there's an additional savings that was already in our budget for that field repair for those fields this year, of a thousand dollars per field that we had in there for grading and edge. And this machine will have all of those things on it. The other thing that this machine will allow us to do is we won't have to go on those fields with Bobcat or the loader because the towns always let us use, go on the fields with them. Well, that, the Bobcat and everything staves up a lot of stuff that, that won't happen anymore because this is a field grooming machine. So, I would like to amend that one to thirty-six eight hundred. And I think, did you give them that, those?
I think they have the, not the upgraded.
Right.
So, they have the.
I've got the thirty-three seven seven two.
You don't have the upgraded one? I thought I said I saved about it.
Is that something?
Oh, that's not?
Do you want, I can do that.
This is the picture of?
I pulled that off the manufacturer's site.
Yeah, off ABI. And ABI, they make specialty field turf equipment. So, I mean, it's not anything I can go get somewhere else. And, but, I mean, what this allows us to do, that allows us to just do a lot of things down there a lot quicker and at a lot higher level.
So, you're saying that you're gonna say twelve sixty-three, two thousand and three thousand? Yeah, it was more than that. Twelve sixty-three.
I got twelve sixty-three, two and two, so.
That's thirty-two sixty-three plus three thousand.
Sixty-two, sixty-three.
That's what I have.
Yeah.
So, if you spent thirty-six eight, you're gonna save sixty-two, thirty-three.
Year one.
Year one.
Yeah, over what I would have normally spent that we've already had budgeted for those other field maintenance. And I have a copy of the thing here, but, you know, long-term, it will actually benefit you more than that because if we're gonna have to pay somebody at some point in time to do some of that field prep, you're gonna be able to do it in a lot less.
How long should this machine last approximately?
I would think twenty years. I mean, and the reason I'd rather go with the upgraded one is this one, they changed the motor and it's all fuel injection now. There's a whole bunch of new features on it.
Did you guys vote on that at your last meeting for the upgraded one?
Yeah, I think so. How was that, huh? I guess I'm not a hundred percent sure.
You discussed it.
Huh?
You've discussed it.
Oh, no, no, it's not just me, no. It's just me and Craig. Because he's the only other one here, because the rest of them are all volunteering. And Craig switched his schedule around so he could be at night and so did I.
I guess, Jay, the other thing that I would want to mention is that four wheeler that we have right now is.
I'm trying, I'm trying to, we've been limping it along.
Limping it along, yeah, yeah.
So, in ten years, this thing will pay for itself. Is that what you're saying?
Uh, less than that.
Probably less.
I am. It'd be.
No, because, I mean, the six grand it saves, I mean.
Does this replace the four wheeler having to rake? Is that what he's talking about?
Yes, but we'll probably still use the four wheeler till it dies.
Well, yeah.
Because it'll give you that.
Even transporting someone that might be injured or something, it's good to have it. But I just didn't know if that's what he meant.
But the four wheeler is, it's done a remarkable job. We've been able to keep it running for quite a number of years, but we just keep limping along. And compared to what we were doing prior to that, it's, the four wheeler and the drag system we have is, we're gaining. We're getting better.
Sounds like a no-brainer to me. I make a motion to expend thirty-six eight in that regular version. One second.
Let's eat. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you. Any more questions to me?
Nope.
No. Thank you.
We'll go back up to the top and comments from the public.
I'm sorry. Did you hear anything else from reports from the town? Is that kind of where they, um, tip off?
Well, I went to the plan meeting and they okayed the real estate office on the corner. And here, and they're going to the offices.
I didn't make the, the, the development committee, yeah. I had another meeting I had to attend.
I have the school committee and I had another meeting that I missed at the last meeting. I can tell you that their budget on, to go to vote passed.
Yes, I saw that paper.
We do have one standing vacancy for school board from mechanic falls. We didn't get anyone to sign a paperwork for it. And we've got an old lady that is now able and going to be filled by an appointment with the council instead of general election. If we get interested.
So, instead of the whole town voting, the council will vote?
The council appoints interim in case there's a vacancy.
Because there's two, there's two, right? Correct. Okay, so who is, who is running? Well, because I know someone who wanted to run. I want to make sure they go.
Thank you, Mayor Markham.
Mayor Markham?
Yes.
So, now, if someone wanted to run, they could go before the council?
They'd be appointed for the interim and then they'd have to run again next year instead of getting a full term.
Would they, what, writing campaign? People organize a writing campaign for the?
They could absolutely write in someone. If that person campaigns themselves as a write-in to get the word out and enough people write them in, then yes, absolutely. Then they would have a three-year if they were voted in. Okay, moving on to comments from the public. We have to keep this up five minutes for each person and a maximum of thirty minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
Any, everyone, again.
Okay.
I want to know how to build enough power, if there's any, the government has moved on or he moves on. If anything's been done. That's my big question.
We are going to discuss that possibly in the next, this month and next month. That's kind of our goal. We had to get through the budget season and we had to wait for some other things to arrive. And one of those was a plan. So, I think that's come in. So, we are gonna be looking at it, so we will update you very soon.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Craig Smith, Brickens Road. Actually, not talking about the rec committee this time around. I am, well, I just wanted to check on the status of the weeks before and after, really.
We're all set.
All set?
All set.
Good. All right. Well, I had.
How's it?
Yep.
I see Tasha Downing on thirty-one Woody Road. I see nine eight is the summer rec, oh, wait, no, eight eleven is the summer candidate director appointment. Is that, do you have someone who you're going to appoint them, like, is there gonna?
We have one application.
Okay. What's happening with that? Is someone gonna interview them?
We haven't got to that.
No, not that time.
I want to make sure it doesn't happen.
Anybody else? Okay. We can move to seven point one, town financial audit presentation.
Can I come up front? So, in front of you is the printed copy and the, probably file it a minute.
Yeah, so, my name is Amanda Schultz Brown. I am here from Smith and Associates. Our firm is in Yarmouth. And we've been auditing the town for a number of years. I'm not really sure how many. But this year, I wanted to present the audit and do, actually, I've been asked to present the audit. So, thank you guys so much for having me. And I'm gonna go over a few of the highlights of this year's audit. So, this year, the opinion on the audit is unmodified as it relates to the governmental activities and the major funds excluding the water department. And the reason for that is that the water department is on a different fiscal year than the rest of the town. And that's by regulations with the PUC. And so, they have December thirty-first year end. Rather than doing audits every six months, there's an audit for the water department that occurs. Another firm does that, and then we do the town. So, when we make our opinion, there are different, there are different areas that we are reporting on. One of those being the major funds. Water department is a major fund of the town. And so, we do an adverse opinion on that, unmodified on the rest of the town. And that's been going on for as long as the split has been. So, governmental financial statements are a little different than your standard business financial statements, but they do have two components to them. One is your governmental activities and the other is the fund financial statements. The fund financial statements are what you're gonna be most familiar with when you're looking at the budget of the town. And that's gonna have different funds. The general government fund, or, sorry, the governmental fund is the overall activities of the town. There's a general fund within that. Often, there's special revenue accounts. And then, there are fiduciary funds also. I'm gonna start at the other part of the financial statements. That's gonna be your governmental activities. Those are what are presented more like a business. And again, it's not what you're using generally for your budgeting of the town, but it is gonna give you your full accrual accounting. That's gonna be, you know, all of your assets reported, all of your debt reported, things like that. So, when an event occurs that creates a financial situation, that's gonna be reported at that time. And that, it's not necessarily in line with cash flow like your fund financials are. So, a few highlights of the governmental, government-wide reporting. That's gonna be that the net position of the town has increased one hundred and sixty-three thousand three eighty-two this year to four million nine fifty-four one eighty-six. Of this amount, there is about two million of that that is unrestricted, which means it is available for use. The other portions of that net position are gonna be net invested in capital assets. So, those are your capital assets, net of the debt related with those. And then, there are some restricted funds. And those are gonna be some outside restricted grants, things like that, that only have a specific purpose that they can be used for. Any questions on government-wide financial statements? I'm gonna go on to the fund financial statements. Those, again, are your budgeted financial statements, the ones you're used to, the ones that the council is looking at when they're approving the financial statements. Those are gonna be your current economic resources. So, cash flows in, cash flows out, basically what's happening currently with your financial resources of the town. Fixed assets are considered capital outlays in that scenario. They're gonna be expensed versus capitalized like they are in the government-wide financial statements. And debt is gonna be treated as either a proceed or repayment of debt in that scenario also. General fund, which is the fund that you're most familiar with, that, at the end of the year, June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, was one million three seventy-four oh forty-five, forty-five dollars. Of that, a hundred and ninety thousand of that was voted to be used for the eighteen nineteen budget to offset taxes. You have, in the budget, the revenues exceeded expectations by roughly a hundred and seventy thousand. It was a hundred and sixty-nine thousand fifty-six dollars for June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. And the expenses were actually underspent by eighty-one thousand nine ten. There was only one area that actually was over budget, was only over budget by twenty-eight dollars, which I'm pretty sure was just rounded, and that's your capital outlay. There are also fiduciary funds that are reported in your financial statements. Those are going to be agency funds the town has been entrusted with outside. Those are going to be agency funds the town has been entrusted with outside funds and those are for those purposes. There are also notes to the financial statements. And the important part of the notes is that they actually give more in-depth information on all of those financial statements that are just numbers. And I did want to highlight a few of the more important notes to the financial statements that we find, that you as users of financial statements will find more useful. One is the property taxes. So this now is going to outline not only your overall assessment for the year and the commitment, but it also outlines the collection. So what has been collected by the town, that ratio, how well the collections are going, and the outstanding balance at the end of the year of unpaid taxes. There are also commitments and contingencies. And this year there were a handful of those, a couple, sorry. The first is the borrowing for the renovation, or sorry, relocation of the town offices. And then there's a lease purchase agreement for a John Deere excavator this year also. And what the commitments and contingencies means is that at the end of the year, at June thirtieth, it's not something that occurred that impacts the financial statements, but it's something that's been committed to so that it's, it's important to the users of the financial statements to know what the town has made for commitments as they're making decisions on what's going to happen going forward. There were prior period adjustments this year. One of the, a couple of reclassifications actually. So all of this information was on the financial statements in the past and they've been reclassified to different areas. One is the unemployment funds. And that has been moved from a business-type activity and is now being reported in the special revenues. Special revenues are those revenues that are committed or restricted for specific purposes. So a good example is the unemployment funds. They need to be used specifically for that purpose. And then the recreation committee funds have been moved to the special revenue funds also. Again, to be used for those specific purposes. We make required communications to the board each year. So in those communications, one of the things that we do is we look at internal controls of this town in order to develop our procedures that we're going to do for the audit. So when we do that, we may come up with deficiencies, either significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. And I'm happy to report that we actually have no significant deficiencies this year. And finally, we also do a letter to the council which outlines what we've done in our audit, any significant issues that we identify, significant note disclosures, which are actually the same ones that I've gone over with you. We talk about fund balance, if it's a healthy fund balance. And then any changes coming up. So often there are going to be changes in reporting, gas fee reporting, things like that. And so we go over that also. That's pretty much our audit in a nutshell, it's financial statements in a nutshell. Yes.
Paul Stotz, East of the State Road. Is our fund balance considered healthy at this point by you?
It is, yeah.
Extremely? Okay?
Well, I'll tell you, so we do have in our letter an outline of what, like general, some general rules of thumb are. But the town actually has its own fund balance policy. And so each year after the audit is received and at the budget process, the town does use that information to fit into the fund balance policy. So that happens after our audit. And there was excess to be able to do the, you know, for example, the hundred and ninety thousand to be able to reduce taxes. And I'm just going to take a moment and look up exactly what the rule of thumb is for you so that you can have that information.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so the fund balance, there are a couple of rules of thumb. So one being that it would be roughly ten percent of the commitment plus one month's expenditure. And we use the seventeen eighteen commitment when we make this calculation. So based on the commitment for last year for seventeen eighteen, the minimum fund balance under that scenario would be six hundred and thirty-five thousand. So the town is above that amount. And then the other is going to be, it's three months of expenditure, so I don't see it right here in my calculation.
Ten percent plus three months for?
Ten percent plus one month. And the other is three months, I was right. And that is the one eight, one million, eight thousand figure. And so again, the fund balance for the town at June thirtieth, eighteen was one million, three seventy-four with a hundred and ninety thousand of that being used to reduce taxes in the upcoming year. And I want to remind also, our calculations, to make sure it's within range, are done based on the prior year's budget, not the upcoming budget. Does that help answer your question?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the [inaudible].
Yeah, thank you. Is that done with me? Yes.
Looking for a motion to accept it to the record?
I make a motion that we accept it to the record, our financial, yearly financial audit report. Second down.
Any further discussion? Allers for favor? Yes.
Can I stay in my chair?
You can stay in your chair.
As long as I'm allowed now. I have been asked to talk, I am Nancy Peterson, the librarian in Mechanic Falls, and I have been asked to talk about the Little Free Libraries that the sixth grade is presently raising or has raised money for. They determined that they would need approximately a thousand dollars to build four Little Free Libraries. The locations, they have four. One by Ballfields, one on Oak Street, one on Water Street and one on Elm Street by the school. They have raised over a thousand dollars and they also apply or asked Lowe's for a donation and they received all of the lumber that they will need for the project from Lowe's. That was delivered last Thursday to the school. They, so they feel like they may be able to put in a fifth Little Free Library. Our library is going to help them stock the units with, the kids are getting very involved, but they will also need some adult books. So our library is willing to donate books for the Little Free Libraries so that the adults can also have books to choose from. And once the project gets going, we'll have, we'll have books all over the place. So we are more than willing, I have quite a few books that we have either taken out of our system or have been donated to the library. They'd be duplicates of books we already have. And we, what we would do is put them in a book sale, which really doesn't lean us a lot of money. So we're more than willing to have, to help the Little Free Libraries and the kids. Anything to promote reading and all of that. And they also will be registered nationally. They have a map that has come out of all of the Little Free Libraries in the country. It's forty dollars to be put on the map. Each one of the little libraries will have their address, it'll say Mechanic Falls and then their address. And it's just forty dollars a one-time-only payment. So they, they are going to do that. They will be completed and filled by June first for Community Day. That's the plan. So the kids are all working, the kids and adults are all working on the libraries now, the little units. And I don't know, any questions?
Yes.
For me, yes?
So these are little buildings?
They're little, they're like little.
Kiosks?
Kiosks, they're like little houses. They're covered, that a lot of them, depending upon the design, the kids have designed, some of the kids have designed their own.
I mean, how many books?
Oh, probably thirty, forty, two shelves.
Whose land is it going to be?
Well, the, the one is going to be at the school. The one's going to be at the Ballfield. The, the one is going to be at Chuck and Laura Vincent's in front of their house so they can?
It's going to be on their land?
On, oh, on their land. The other one is going to be at Valerie Young's house. And then the fifth one that they're talking about doing, they're talking about it being a bench style, a bench design that would be, people could sit on the bench, but the books would go underneath the bench. And they're not that sure on that. And they're talking about possibly putting it in the Veterans Park. But that would have to have approval from the Legion, I believe. I'm not real positive about that one.
Town owns that one.
No, Legion owns the, Legion owns that park with the statue, so.
May very well. So I just, because I'm wired.
They're going to have a post.
I'm wired different than most people.
That's okay.
If, if somebody was on Chuck Vincent's land and slipped on the ice and fell down and smashed their head, are they going to sue Chuck or are they going to sue the town?
That's beyond my, that's beyond my.
Private property.
So, so at a public library?
Oh, are, no, it's not the.
It's a, it's RSU.
It's RSU sixteen.
RSU.
And they're operating with permission.
It's, I'm just, I'm just, I was just asking.
So there's no liability whatsoever for the town?
No, no.
Unless, of course, it's the one on the Ballfield.
Thanks, ma'am.
Next question.
Any questions?
Any other questions?
No, sounds good.
Did you got a grant for something? You got a grant for something?
I did. I got a grant from the state for a counter for the library. So it will count people going in and out and I don't have to use my little scratch pad.
I'm going to go and run in and out five hundred times.
No, 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 it'll mess me up. Yeah, so it's, I think they run five hundred dollars. But the state offered, said that they had a grant, they had some to offer if anybody wanted it. And you had to have their specifics and I qualified for all the specifics. So they're going to come and install it. And then when, if I move, they'll move it.
Oh, that's awesome. Thank you.
Eight point two.
Yep.
Well, I came in here to raise a bunch of stuff about the [inaudible]. I came in tonight, Fred, Hector doing his own research. Now, this has been, you most, most of you guys know, it's been going on for two years. Fred came up with his own research and it's on the one that, the bottom of the page is number eight. And it says, it's under prior mistakes. So it's been sent right along with a permit, basically illegal to the government issued, mistakes by the previous CEO and all that. Well, Fred came up with that, prior mistake, and now you're on my way again. And I just figured that somebody ought to take a look at that. Because if you read the permit and it's exact wording in the permit, everything that that permit specifies has been done. The issue was the open-ended date of the future placement of the mobile home. And Fred has basically made the same determination that I have had for the last two years, that that permit is a still legal standing permit because there's no expiration as to the future placement of that home. The permit has conditions on there that don't expire unless significant budget commence. Doesn't say the [inaudible]. Everything that I was permitted for in that permit is complete. The only thing that hasn't been done is the placement of the home. And the permit clearly states under description, so the future placement of the mobile home. So construction had come out. Oh, it didn't know where that is, yes. Concrete slabs in, water, power sewer underground. They keep the, did the inspection on the electricals and so on. You didn't really expect it on that? You're doing that back in, might have been last, last night in Denver.
I don't know who did it, I didn't. I haven't been near, I haven't been on High Street or, I don't know, years.
But this is, like you said, this has been an ongoing battle because everybody has said that the permit should have never been issued. And under that prior mistake that was issued, it clearly states that even though it was issued illegally, once the appeals process on that permit, which is forty-five days, the court has to appeal that permit, once that time expires, they can't appeal that permit. Which is basically what's happening now, the town boards are trying to appeal that permit.
You talked to MMA, correct? And they're, and they're advising us that we cannot, is that correct?
What MMA has said in the last conversation is because we had a resignation from the appeals board, we don't have a quorum for an appeals board, so we can't call on another, call another appeals board until we appoint someone, which we're looking to do. So what they clarified is that the council doesn't have any jurisdiction over a ruling of the appeals board. And the management or the council are required to take action and we, in the further process, and we can't go against the decision of the appeals board.
Correct. But there is also an ordinance in Mechanic Falls Town Ordinances. And that's under Article Two, Section Eight, when there's a violation, and I wrote, you have a copy of it, when there's a violation of an ordinance. And this isn't to overturn or overrule anybody, but that the town council has the authority to enter into a consent agreement to eliminate the violation. And if you read the last paragraph of that, it's that such agreement should not allow in the legal structure or use to continue unless there is clear and convincing evidence that the illegality was a direct result of erroneous information given by an authorized power official and there's no evidence that the owner or violator acted in that way. That gives the town council the authority to enter into an agreement, a consent. It doesn't tell you, it doesn't mean that you're going to overrule any board in this town. It means that you're going to recognize that that permit caused a violation and that that violation can now be entered into a consent agreement between myself and the board.
I wonder if this erroneous information also included date?
I don't, I, I don't know, I mean, I don't know the.
Excuse me, I would think erroneous information would be like property line to the road, certain widths and that. Am I right? I don't.
Well, I think the erroneous part is what they're saying is that, he put the wording in there that I could place the house in the future. That's the part. And that he didn't have the authority to even issue that permit. Because they said that it had to go in front of appeals board because of the road setbacks. So he determined the placement of that pad, as far as its setbacks, he cleared it all. So, and now the boards are saying that, well, he should have never done that. Well, yeah, he may not have, but that caused me to spend a ton of money. And Fred's, Fred's right there as far as that legal section. He's the one who gave that to me tonight, he may have better clarification on that.
So my question is now, is where that pad is, is it legal to our town ordinances?
No.
It is not.
It, it does not meet the road setback. Which, I have a picture, every house on that road is basically at the exact same distance from the road. And I have a picture that shows the house above and the house below. And I also have a picture that shows that I moved the pad away from two of the property lines to make it comply with the side setbacks. The only one it couldn't meet is road. And that was done in two thousand fourteen and approved. And that was done in two thousand fourteen and approved.
I don't know how to go with this. I'm feeling like whatever we do is gonna be two wrongs that are not gonna make a right.
So, I'm, I'm a little confused by the dates on the permit. Well, Fred, Fred thinks that- Permit dates twenty fourteen expires five seven twenty fourteen, expires five nine twenty-
That was a mistake that he made.
Fred thinks it was a mistake. He did, it should have been fifty instead of forty.
That's correct. Should have been a year later. Thirteen months later.
Thirteen months later. So, it really should have been six nine twenty fifteen.
And as far as the placement from the road, because it was a fire-damaged property, he could put it on the same-
Put it back on the same-
That's correct. That's correct. And he, and he did move it back a couple of feet. So, he didn't make it more non, more non-decorative. He did help it some bit.
The town council already authorized it to enter into an administrative consent agreement for the purpose of eliminating violations. Such agreement should not allow illegal structure or use to continue unless there's clear and convincing evidence that the illegality was a direct result or erroneous information or advice given by an authorized town official. And there is no evidence that the owner acted in that way. Here's, if you wanna, you wanna look at that?
I'll, I'll, I'll see that.
Okay. Well, I've just showed you that, how far away from the property- I always thought we had in our ordinance that you, if you couldn't meet the setback, I always thought in our ordinance, I'd never looked it up, but I was told a long time ago, that you can take the average from the center of the road to every house on the street. And whatever that average number is, you can do. I was told that four, five years ago.
That, that's correct. That is the state law. It's not, it's not a law.
Oh, that's a state law.
Yes.
You know, you go down the road, and if there's twelve houses on it, however far they are from the center of the road, you average that out, and that's where you can put your structure.
Correct.
Now, here's-
Is our ordinance more strict?
There's my slab, there's the house below. Yep. There's my slab, and there's the house above. Yeah, it sounds to me like we can enter an administrative consent agreement on this because there's no evidence that he did this in that way. And there was erroneous information or advice given by the, by employees of the town. It says on it, placement of pad for future mobile homes. It doesn't say placement, pad, and future mobile home within thirteen months.
I agree, but why wouldn't MMA say?
They say you can't overrule-
Can't overrule.
You're not overruled.
Really not overruled.
You can enter a consent agreement to eliminate violations of ordinance. We can't say the appeal, we can't say that the appeal will, you know, will overrule what the appeals board said. We can't say that. I don't know. Sounds like it's word of fraud. And that gives into a Cannon Falls Town Ordinance, that section, uh, Article Two, Section Eight.
What do you think, Fred? The man should have his house.
I think there's-
Stand up and say that.
There's a number, there's a number of different ways to look at that, and I'm, I'm just kinda relying on what they wanna do. That makes no difference to me. I mean, an expiration date has expired, you didn't complete the home. I think if you set a precedence that you've got a number of homes that are only partially finished in the, in this community, there could be some people that are pretty upset. If you've got people with just four walls and a tie bar flapping in the wind. I think the idea of the, the permit is to complete the job within the thirteen months with a, with an extension of another year if they need it, and given granted at least two prior to that.
But why doesn't it say that on this permit?
It does at the bottom, except that the, the description that was given by the prior CEO put the wording in for future placement of the home.
Right.
Okay, so, is that forever?
Well, there's no date on it for future-
That's correct.
Mobile home.
But the permit itself says at the bottom that has thirteen months to complete it.
Well, it actually says thirteen months to commence or complete. This permit will expire within thirteen months of date issue if construction has not been commenced by that date.
And in our ordinance book, it says complete.
Oh, it does?
Yes, it does.
Well, our permit ought to say it then.
Perhaps.
Change the permit and say, you got thirteen months. I mean, make it as plain as possible. You got thirteen months to complete the project, but you're our allowed a one-year extension after that.
Two, two, actually.
Okay. Then that ought to be written down somewhere. And actually, the town ordinance on the expiration of the permit also says that it expires if it hasn't been completed as conditioned. And my, the condition is right there under the description.
I know this is relevant. Why have you waited this long?
I just was waiting to build up the money. That was the whole thing. I'm, this is bigger than two years, I decided this in two thousand seventeen to, to try to get there. He wanted to put the house in two thousand seventeen. Correct. So, you know- So, he was, he was-
Waiting to build up-
He was five-
It's seventy thousand dollars.
Twenty fifteen, and he could go two more years to twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen.
No.
No, no.
Fifteen was the last of all of the extensions.
Fifteen was the last of the extensions. Oh, oh, okay. I had to have the pad, this is what was told to me by the CEO. It had to be in, by the expiration, the pad had to be in with the water, the power, the sewer. As long as that was done, and he inspected it, I could place the home in the future. And he wrote it that way. Why else would he put the, put that in there, that I could place it in the future? Basically, that's what it all comes down to, is is it still a valid permit, like Fred said, with that ordinance? Or do we have a violation of the ordinance, and the town council would need to get in some type of an agreement as how we're gonna solve the problem?
Good thoughts?
I do.
Okay, let's hear them.
I think that we should enter an agreement with him, let him put his mobile, is a, is it a, is it a modular home? It's a double, it's a double Y. Double Y. Let him put a manufactured, manufactured home on this pad and be done with this madness. But in the, but in the future, something has to change so this can never happen again.
Yeah, there's not gonna, like Fred was saying, someone's not gonna build a house and just put a tar paper-
No, absolutely not. I wouldn't want that.
And we are, the planning board is currently working on five potential ordinance changes to bring to, to you, and one of them is addressing setbacks in lock sites in the downtown locks because potential problems can be had by other lots.
This double wide, maybe within five years?
I don't know money right now to order. It's gonna take six weeks to eight weeks to have it delivered. But I was not gonna spend the money until somebody gave me an approval.
Our language draft is for your approval next month if you make a motion now. But they have to have someone else write this.
Right. However, it's gonna be written.
Can you have it set with a precedent that this, or set that this is not setting precedent?
And what the consent agreement does is it doesn't change, or really, it's not, it shouldn't be used to set a precedent. It's a one-off, like this, this-
This is not another wrong that's gonna make two wrongs that are gonna make a right.
Correct.
No complaints by the neighbors?
No, we actually had some neighbors come in to speak before the home going in.
Okay.
So, do we need to make a motion to have our attorney draft, or somebody draft the proper language?
Correct.
To him, for us to enter into a consent agreement?
Correct.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. I'll send it.
Do I hear, um, Paul?
Oh, sorry.
Well, um, I can, from my planning board chair, please, I've got a question. Will we require that to have a finish-by date on it?
Sure. What kind of a date do you think would be? So, so, go out, go out. I can let you know in two weeks. How long, how long it's gonna take? And then give yourself another one to- Yeah. Don't tear yourself up. I can say, you know, I mean, okay, let's say it'll be done by December.
But whatever approval is, it'll next month anyway.
Right, right.
So, will you have a date for us by then?
Well, I have to put it in the order, so I have to make sure- He wants the paperwork before he puts you on. I need to have the paperwork to put it in the order. I'm not gonna spend seventy thousand dollars. And then somebody say, oh, wait, we can't do this. But if, if he puts in, if he tells who's gonna write all this language, it'll be done by December thirty-first. Are you okay with that? I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Well, I, yeah, if Paul is good with it, I guess I'll vote for it. Paul is good with it, right? I really don't wanna go against the planning board or-
It was, it was a mistake done, that was an oversight. We're rectified, we're working on fixing it for the future, and it won't set precedent. And that's all I care about is not having a precedent set. And an end time, a definitive end time, this time.
Yep. Okay.
All those in favor? Any analysts?
Two years, five years out there. Go on.
Glad to have you. All the time. Make money all the time, that old man that went through the rink at the Red Light. I don't pay my money. I'm very serious. I get sushi, and I'm getting my bowl.
Eight point five, if I can jump in and record it. It is, or you got it right. Eight point five, um, there is a foreclosure packet, um, so there are four properties, um, with three years of back taxes. We provided a synopsis and recommendations. The numbers set following our disposal of tax-acquired property policy, the numbers have been set based on what is owed for back taxes as well as a small, as a, as well as what we've used in the past, a listing price. We're up to another seven hundred and fifty thousand, maybe attorney fees to go through the process, list it, dispose it. And then, uh, in your package is a paper tax cards, the IB cards for the property.
So, are these already passed, what is it, thirty-six months?
Three years. So, we are-
Have these already passed the thirty-six months?
So, the first one, um, uh, the South Main Street property is actually bank-owned. It was repossessed by a mortgage company. That mortgage company has also filed for bankruptcy, which makes it a little more difficult for us to follow the process yet. They filed after we foreclosed, so we own it, but because of that, we have to wait an elongated redemption period which we are about to the end of. Julie, um, our tax clerk, has been working with the company, um, and they've sent the partial payments that we haven't processed yet, because we don't process partial payments, because that will not clear their debt. But they've been adamant, again, we're talking to the mortgage company now, and one person says, we're sorry, we're gonna pay it, we're sending a check, um, and then they send a check for a few hundred dollars short.
You're talking about the tax?
This is-
Or a mortgage?
The mortgage company, Diet Tech filed for bankruptcy.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So, there's quite a few more counties dealing with their property.
So, that's this one here?
The South Main Street property. I think it's a double Y, double Y.
The two thousand Camelot Titan?
Yes.
Is that the one?
Yes.
It's crossed, that's how it on, right on, okay.
So, that one's vacant, um, but the presumption is we could wait for that company to finally send us a check and save us the process of going through, um, the bid sale and everything else. Number two, um, North Main Street property, we've worked on trying to get a lump sum payment. That has not worked. You can see the dollar amount that was owed. Julie's been working with the property owner to try and get them set on a payment schedule that would work, but at this point in the process, the council would have to agree to a payment option. And this is a primary residence.
Is this the one that we've made a couple of, and he thinks the name is short, forget it?
Just one, just one right there. It was a-
So, the amount they owe is not on these papers?
It is on the cover sheet, um, isn't in the paper pack. You can use paper.
Oh.
And in the digital packet is the agreement language, trying to set up a five hundred fifty dollar a month payment to catch them up, uh, but it would have to be done within ten months.
That's on the North Main Street property?
Yes. And then the other two, I'm gonna pull it up this way. But the other two are, one is a mobile and a park, um, Brookline. And that is a primary residence, I believe. Uh, it is a primary residence. Um, and the third one, and the fourth one is, um, a vacant property on Clifford Street, the vacant firm.
So, on the one on Brookline Drive?
Yes.
It says owner's name up there.
Yep.
And then underneath it, it has two other names.
So, it was in the, it was bought within the last tax cycle, so the people who sold it keep getting the notices, but we're also copying the listing on it because-
So, this guy?
The top single person.
The top single person that owns it?
Yep.
He hasn't contacted you?
Um, certified letters, multiple, um, I believe park people have reached out to talk to them as well.
Is, do you know if it's the gentleman who lives in Turner? Name?
I haven't seen it.
Not the gentleman that died recently, the same name.
No, oh, the Todd name, the somebody that died?
No, he's sort of not, he didn't die with the same name. I haven't seen any of them, because this is more-
I know the two names below.
Top one.
The Todd name.
Um, their primary residence is listed here, but there was also another one that recently passed away, like, two months ago.
But it's not the same one now, for sure?
I don't know about another person from Turner.
If I know that name, I'm wondering if that's his father. He's, he got in Turner as a junior.
This person's not that old.
No?
My age is the one?
Oh. Oh. Maybe it's a boy. Could be a third.
I was gonna say, if it's the one that passed, maybe could be-
He might be a junior.
And the second, I thought, yeah.
Um, so we've made our full list of contacts.
That's a place to check, yeah.
We can, we can probably get ahold of, like, the neighbors, but I'm gonna give them one.
I think they know it's-
Oh, you could have.
So, we're-
If someone was a person-
So, the one on Brookline Drive is a straight shot, just no problem.
There would potentially be an eviction process that costs a little extra, but we've kinda insulated it in.
But somebody's living there? Possibly.
Supposedly.
Supposedly.
But they're not answering any mail, letters, phone calls. And the Clifford Street one is vacant, hasn't been vacant for a long time. Now, you can see the term on there, on the, on the-
Yes, there's bricks up the hole and down.
So, the council, what I would need is any changes to the recommendations on any of the four properties and set the numbers, and then we can modify the one Mr. Hackett has and get that approved tonight to move it forward.
But one thirty-nine North Main Street?
Yep.
The person that lives there is trying to make arrangements to pay?
Has been working with the tax clerk, has been trying to get payment set up.
Okay. So, we're gonna leave that alone?
That'll be the recommendation.
And the bank-owned one, we're gonna wait and see if they bring in, I'm sure they will.
I'm sure they will, and it's always, now I'm talking to the company, um, one person, the one that lives in order here, wants to get us a check. They obviously don't wanna lose their interest in all these properties, but whoever cut the check, cut it for substantial less than what it needed to be in order for them to get ownership back. So, if we accepted that, we, we can, we have about fifteen more days before that check expires from the process. We can cash that, but that would count as us, de facto, making, making a payment arrangement, which we didn't wanna do.
I wouldn't do that. I wouldn't. And I would let them know that you've got fifteen days or whatever the time is.
We'll send it back.
I can, or I'm gonna send the check back and at the next meeting, foreclose on it. So, we need a motion to foreclose on these two.
Nobody lives in that one, right?
Um, and you have the Brookline, yes, but nobody lives in that one. It's, it's a vacant property owned by the bank owns. So, there is- So there is a, in that here. There's also the notices and the numbers. For those two properties, we just need to confirm what numbers you'd want to set the minimum bids for, anything that would be looking at foreclose.
We'll probably have to foreclose on them for us, right?
We already own them. So we've already foreclosed on them. It's an automatic process, three years into it. So we own, the town owns all four properties leased. So now we just need to set the minimum bid for... And that would be, those are the bid specs that are in your packet and very simple for to set what we would accept as minimum bid for those properties. And then publish that. And we should be able to get that turned around, advertised, and hopefully get some bids in on some of the properties by the next meeting.
So this has public monies in it for auction and all that?
About $750 apiece is what we have to average to spend every time we give this over here.
So I'm at the motion that we put out the bid 60 Brookline Drive with a minimum bid of $4,050. And we also put out the bid 17 Clifford Street with a minimum bid of $5,225.
Is this the Clifford Street one? Yeah, with the brick on the car.
$5,225.
So that was a motion?
That was.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any unanimous? You want to go to the water line? Okay, we're going to move to 8.9 Water Line Extension Bid.
So let me hand out that packet. So this is something we've been waiting on. If you want to do it in scratch and...
Okay.
So, thanks Steve. We opened the bids for the Water Line Extension Project last week. And we've been doing some magic behind the scenes. So the bid, for the two bids that we received for that Water Line Extension to Vetrino Park on Pulling Corn Road, as you can see on the first page, we only have $520,000 approved. It's all grant monies from CDBG and then another $100,000 from the drinking water program once the site is up and running. You can see our bids came in higher. But about four hours ago, they confirmed that we were awarded another $300,000 in grant money so that we will have enough grant money, non-taxpayer money, to be able to complete this project with bids on hand. So bids are coming in ridiculously high. If you haven't seen, DOT is now canceling some projects, which is rather unheard of for them doing.
I'll say you have another $300,000.
We have another $300,000 that just signed to say that we were interested and Terry Ann from the USDA has locked it up for us.
That's a grant.
Grant.
So the 400 is a grant. The 100 is a grant.
Yes, managing water foundation.
And you have another?
300.
300. So that's 800. And we have two bids. One for $755 and one for $927.
You know cross excavation? Do you know? Do you know?
I do not. I do not. But I haven't heard anything bad, but I'm here to bat first. They're from the Bethlehem area.
They did come in and said, and then...
Wow. It appears like you'd either go across or we don't do the project.
Pretty simple.
To give you a quick history, over the last week, we opened bids and they got it. And so we started eliminating, because the first thing we wanted was a tower. We're going to have a 30,000 gallon tower up there. We eliminated that. We were going to put services to all the losses we went through. We eliminated those. We dropped from 12-inch pipe to 8-inch pipe. We got it so we could just sweep by with the money we had. And, but we had to make some concessions to do that. Now all of a sudden, we find out that 4 hours ago, if CDBG comes through with another $300,000, we'll do the project as we wished.
So now you get the storage thing. You get the storage thing. And you get the 8-inch pipe.
We'll get the 12-inch, 12-inch crossing the brook. There's a contingency in there. If they don't hit les, they're bored, free sheet. We're going down to the brook rather than through it. If you go through it, you have to jump a lot of hoops. So they're going to bore on each of the brooks. I was amazed because, and we opened the bids the other day and I sent an email to Terry Ann Holden from CDBG. And she said, let me look around. Most of the answers you get from those people are just called yes or no. And I was on the phone this afternoon with the engineer and we were talking about, well, maybe we can cheat a little with this and knock off that, kind of keep our numbers in range. And Michelle turned to me, she said, hey, I just got an email from Terry Ann. She said, you're going to get the full price of your project.
So the rate payers and mechanic hauls are not going to have to pony up $20,000.
We're going to invest some upfront, but we hope to get it all back. There was a chance before we're done, depending on contingencies and things like that, we might spend some money. But it's the rate payers of the mechanic hauls, water department system, and we get a lot of the rate payers in the town folk. So we might end up, might end up, I don't think we will, might end up shelling out a few dollars because we did upfront say that we'd contribute up $20,000. I think now that we're going to spend some money to get it back, but I think we're going to get all our money back.
Do you know how many accounts that's in? One account, but...
One.
One big one top of the hill, looking forward to that. Two fire hydrants and about $100 a month each. And the trail pot's going to be fantastic.
So the water company's not going to spend more than $20,000. That would be the maximum.
That is how I feel. That's what we agreed to upfront. And it looks like now the drinking water program will give us up to $100,000. So when we're done, there won't be any money left over. And we've got, we're going to have about $53,000 tied up in our money, but we anticipate getting that back. You know, it's the engineer and the permits and stuff like that. It's all the stuff, and this is lessons I learned, Wayne. All this free money, you need money to get it. So you have to send seven letters to the union driver, not to ask them if it's okay to do it, things like that. So we've got money tied up in there. And the engineer is going to give it for about $5,000 or anything. And that's our upfront power.
So we want to do a motion to award the bid to cross excavation? That was a motion. For $755, $925.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any unanimous?
Thank you.
We got that phone call, because that was an email actually this afternoon. Michelle almost saw it, rolled me and cried.
She does that too.
Group six.
Group six. So after last month, we had a resignation from the appeals board, which is included in the packet. We're still looking for more. We need seven. Appeals board holds five people with two alternates. Right now, we only have two. So we can't convene. We've confirmed we can convene with a quorum of three on the appeals board and there's an application in front of you for someone interested in being on the appeal.
I'll make a motion to accept Tom Holden's resignation.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any unanimous? Anyone have an application? Aaron Willett, 70 San Diego.
Are you skipping?
Oh.
Seven is the property risk assessment?
Yeah, the designation and the claimant are all rolled into one.
But they should be separate motions?
We can do separate motions. So he's...
Oh, 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 oh. Okay, doesn't say it here. Oh, application, okay.
So I'll make a motion that we accept Aaron Willett's application or appoint Aaron Willett to the board of appeals.
There we go. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any unanimous?
MMA property risk assessment report is in your digital files. This is from the auditor going to defy the outer buildings. And this is just to accept it. We've been working on internally cleaning up the stuff and coming with a report. Process is about done. Meet with, there's two tenants involved as well and bring them into the conversation and we'll have a formal plan drawn up for June.
May I let her say something?
Yes.
So I reviewed that report as far as how it relates to our program. And there's a bunch of stuff on there that my concern is that they're not state-regulated things. Like I brought a school-aged childcare. Spending money on public covers for school-aged children when the building's probably got like 90 publics in there is waste money and not required by the state of Maine licensing.
But it's not protectors, are they?
As far as like having our cleaning utensils in the kitchen, not against state of Maine state regulations for school-aged childcare.
Infer.
So as long as they're in different contain, different covers, that's fine. So I think, I just, I think I need to get some clarification as to what we actually need to spend.
Right. So in what we have to do is, we have an online punch list and we just have to put in what the town's going to, how we address it, what are the plans? Some of them are the roofs. We're going to, right now, spitballing the budgeting for it the year after. But for any of the tenants, fire association included, it is, we have sent a letter stating that, you know, we've sent this and give them the portion of the lease that covered it that lets MMA know that it's a leasehold situation and it's not the town's liability. And that's really what we would be submitting and present that language in those...
I just want to make sure that we're all in line at the same, you know?
And there's still a little bit within the process that I'm ironing out in the response report, which is what I want to say to you as well because I think one of the photos was attributed to your building that I don't think was your building.
Yeah, we found a couple of things that were not ours. That doesn't exist.
I thought I only saw like three or four photos.
They are...
Washington, the... There's eight photos?
If you have a container with Windex on it and it says Windex, yeah, fine. But if you take that Windex and put it in a clear ball, you know about that.
Yeah, but I was talking about the outlet covers.
Yeah, it's in there, it's on like the last page.
Yeah, how many was it?
It's one and it's over the refrigerator.
Yeah, it's hiding.
I mean, we're talking about a 29-cent cover that you screw on?
Yeah, we're not worried about that. That's not, I mean, that's not what I'm saying at all.
You're talking about the plug-in ones.
I'm just making sure that we're in line.
Yeah, we're talking about those plug-in child protectors.
Child safety, a lot of things. We don't require those licensing. They're, you know...
I don't think that would affect our insurance.
I don't think it is. We have to just respond and say, I mean, it's their operation for the most part, and a lot of the stuff that was kind of picked up or...
Right. I mean, the outlets, I didn't have cover on it. I get that, touches a finger in there and touches the wire.
And we've got siding stuff that our guys are starting to look at, which I want to get them wrapped up before.
So I don't think it's like crazy.
I just want to make sure that we're all the same. Because there's, I mean, there's a lot of housekeeping things that obviously had we known that this was going to happen, we would have cleaned up the storage room.
And we do have a lock usually that's on our cabinet that has our paint and stuff in there.
And that lock we found on Michelle, that really is...
And I wanted to clear anything up with you and to talk to Scotty about it too. Anything that might have been in there prior, like in the back storage closet, stuff that you guys didn't necessarily bring in? I'm thinking the secondary kind of paint and chemical closet in the back that I don't know if you guys were even using that, but it might have been stuff that we had in that building and left it. Leaking paint on our side as well.
Yeah, we do all the painting and repairs for that stuff.
Then we did catch base on the light fixtures showing leaking, that they were second-hand light fixtures, so that water's not coming from our roof. So that's a nice easy fix. We still are going to have our guys look around the chimney, the metal square box chimney they have. There's signs of leaking around that chimney. Looking at it, and we'll have the full report next month and we'll work on it.
So does that mean we're probably on the same page?
Yeah. Because I just want to make sure.
So we just need a motion to accept that we've received the report from MMA and we will have that drawn up for June.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any unanimous?
Be quiet up there today. Be quiet up there today.
Yeah, I'm asleep.
We have bids for Lewis and Red survey. We're going to still take that.
I didn't read you about where we're in the survey, did you?
No. You guys know where we are in the survey, don't you?
We were on...
Let's talk about it later.
Need a motion to table that and set aside.
I'll make a motion to table it.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any unanimous?
We're done. 810 Public Works Truck Bid. Again, we opened those last week. Weren't incredibly happy with trade-in values. Scotty went back and talked to his crew, figured out what their thought process was, what they were thinking on potentially keeping it for that trade-in value or not. What Public Works is asking for is to take the trade-in value and order the 2020 unit. So that would be...
Are you buying one truck or two trucks?
One truck.
You're buying one truck?
One truck. And then the other ox bid is for the equipment bed, plow rig. So this is...
So the Viking sides and the allied equipment?
Yes.
Is the...
Is the plow rig and the dump bed.
Wow.
So...
Seventy grand.
And the turn time was another thought process that they were having in Haring because they're saying maybe 200 days before we fill everything out and get it into circulation. But we don't have to give up the trade-in until we take, until we get the new one. So they would be looking for... Morrison, the 2020 Morrison bid. And then the...
That's the black one?
Yes.
The other one's red.
The other one's red vinyl. The other concern is that with the air ride, once you hang that wing off it, you spend all winter riding the cockhide. And they're looking for one with the fixed spring suspension in the front, so it would ride more level. And then they would be asking for the lower bid on the equipment from Viking with the stainless steel... Stainless steel add-on. Yep.
So is it three different bids here or three different things we're looking at?
There are two bids, Viking and... Yep, all from the same person, which is probably...
Morrison, yeah. So, and they're looking for the 2020 truck.
Yep.
And then there's the allied, which is the dump bed or the... And that is...
Allied was $69,950.
You don't have a $9,000 for... Is that what it was?
That's $134,795 total for the two of them. And so the 2020 truck is not air ride in the front?
Sixty grand.
It springs. Were they expecting to spend $135,000? Were they expecting to spend a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the truck and plows?
Yeah.
They were.
Yeah. And it's still higher. I think what they were really open for was much more on the trade-in than what they were giving.
Yeah, you're giving us what, thirteen grand or something?
And then the turn time is the other thing. I mean, we want to be able to have it and make sure we have it for next cost season.
That's what we do, we buy trucks and use them up. You all sat?
So it'd be looking for a motion to accept the Viking, uh, the Viking bid for sixty-nine, one, fifty.
Sixty-nine, one, fifty?
I thought it's nine.
It's sixty-nine, nine, fifty.
Yes, with the add-ons. On the second sheet, page two.
That's with allied?
Nope, on Viking.
Oh, it's with the other one. Viking. So that is sixty-nine, one, fifty.
For the, for the equipment, for the truck bed wing plow. And then what they were requesting is the Del Air plow controls, the pneumatic controls plus the stainless steel bump up.
So that's fifty-nine hundred more.
Fifty-nine more.
On top of the sixty-nine, one, fifty?
Yes.
So is that seventy-five thousand and fifty dollars?
Yes. And that's just for Viking.
And then sixty-four, eight, forty-five for the 2020 from Morrison's.
Correct.
Make a motion on both of them.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, it's a long one.
All those in favor? Any?
Getting a rumor for thirty-six thousand.
What are you gonna do? You get, you go off a bid and that's what you get.
And that was, that was the big concern on that thirteen thousand for the trade-in, on whether or not it made any sense to keep it for backup job or not, but. Yep.
And that's all fitted with the seventy-five thousand dollars worth of plows and stuff?
Yeah, put a little bit of work into it.
It's a what?
Weaponry as all.
Weaponry as all.
Did Boom want to keep it? What did he say? Did he say, let's keep the truck for thirteen thousand?
There were debate on it, but what he mentioned this morning was trade it in and go with the 2020. And the biggest concern is the wait time on the two hundred day turn time to get it out.
When I talked to him, he wanted to keep it for backup.
A eleven summer camp director appointment, there's one application resume in your packet, in the paper packet.
And background check has been done and all that sort of thing. Well, good.
Say it's certified teacher, pass all those, sorry, background checks.
Motion to approve the appointment. And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
So with this, we're all ready to tell, we, we have a summer program now?
No, it's at, work with them, with Ashley and Lisa, get everyone else they need for staff onboard.
And we can advertise that?
Do you have anything to say, Sue?
I've already got applications coming in, so I hope we can advertise it.
And how many do you have so far?
I have twelve in hand right now and I have more to come in. I have not sent a flyer out to the school yet. I wanted to make sure there was a person appointed to the position so that they could have their contact information instead of contacting me and then having that change within how long it takes, so. I don't see a problem with the program running.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have an interview?
So I thought when we appointed Julie as the modern vehicle agent, we also did the inland fisheries and wildlife agent because she does basically most of the counter functions. And apparently we did not do the paperwork for that, so we have to appoint her, we don't have to, we're asking that you appoint her as the inland fisheries and wildlife agent to be able to discuss with them and be responsible for whatever plate numbers and all that kind of stuff we did in. It's just a basic admin function.
She's doing kind of monthly backups anyway and we're going down monthly.
And so this doesn't need all your signatures. If you approve it, then you would be approving it for Zach to decide on one of them.
Make a motion that we approve Julie Ward, the IFW agent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any?
GA hearing agreement is in your packet, number two. Gonna go over it then.
So I went through the general assistance training when I took over GA, because Shannon Moxley, I don't know if everybody knows, is fast now. And one of the things that they said is to make sure that you have a good fair hearing authority for each town that has basic knowledge of the program. So knows whether or not the decision is being made per regulation. I think previously you guys may have been the fair hearing authority. I never really knew who it was because I had to deal with it. But we were trying to enter into an agreement and I've already been sworn in by Minnet for the Minnet Town Manager is their general assistance person and I am ours for us to fair hear each other's cases. So she already has knowledge of what regulations and what type of monies can be given for what reasons. Therefore, it would make more sense for her to hear a fair hearing request if someone thinks that I've denied them and weren't supposed to. So all this would be, would be for you guys to accept us to have Danielle Loring. Danielle Loring, who is the Minnet Town Manager, as our fair hearing authority. In three years, I've never heard of any of them even having a hearing, but, and then I would swear, Carmen.
It's like an appeals board for general assistance, bringing you being denied instead of them bringing their denial and reason. What has been is the council's been appointing themselves every year as GA Fair Hearing that hasn't come up, thankfully. But in case it does, that you have somebody who's been through the training and those.
And the other thing is then you're not trying to make a decision on town money either. So like if I say, no, the town's not gonna give you money for this because you don't qualify, and then they come to you and say, well, I don't think that's fair. I think I do qualify. Not only have you not been through the training, but you're making a decision on whether or not you're spending the GA monies that are set aside for the town. So there's no conflict if somebody else is making that decision. They're making it based solely on the regulations of the program.
Any further?
I make a motion to approve the GFA hearing agreement. And I'll second that.
Any discussion?
So the woman in the past that did it for us.
She was the general administrator, general admin, yeah. Thank you, administrator, which is what I'm now doing. So I'm doing all of our applications that come in. I go through the application according to the regulation from the state of what we do and what we have for an ordinance. Determine whether or not they're eligible for assistance for us, make sure they go out and try to get assistance from all the other places that they're able to first and then make that determination. This person would only be if someone came back and said, I want a hearing because I don't think that that was correct.
So you're just taking on this responsibility?
I just started doing general assistance applications in February. I was her backup, Shannon, but we never really needed to have a backup. So then I started doing them myself in February, went to the training and actually just today when I returned from being out, got my certification from them that I'm a certified general minister.
All those in favor?
And there's no money from town to town to pay for the other one to do.
We don't have much in that budget anymore.
Next one is Justin Informational, working with the assessor, um, eight point, nine point three on the iPads. I wanted to bring up to you, our certified ratio has been knocked from one hundred to ninety-five, given the timeframe that we've been out since our last partial reval. We do have, uh, most of the money that we need for our new reval. Already CIP in waiting. We're thinking about a couple of years before we can potentially pull the trigger on that. And that would get us back up to a hundred. It's based on, they used, within the fluctuation, I want to say it was seventy-nine, we were around eighty-eight percent, but Dennis and the assessors are, have suggested to the state that we be placed at a ninety-five percent certified ratio until they reassess us reval's next year. Nine point four is what we've been waiting for. The new transfer station manager has been working on this process. We talked about it in the budget cycle, without any added hours, staff hours. What we're doing is moving what has been an administrative day from the transfer station manager, set them up up there. And we're looking to add a Thursday rotation, twelve to six P M, from May to September as summer hours. So it would be adding an extra day of transfer station operations through the summer, May to September. And there's no budgetary increase for those extra hours. But the council sets the hours. So what we're asking is, if you can see it, setting a summer hour and a winter hour of operation schedule. Winter hours are what they are right now. Summer hours, we're just looking to add Thursday afternoons. And what he's been pretty keen on is trying to stay open later, later in the evening on a weekday for people who don't get out of work or home in time to hit their normal four P M close time.
I'll make a motion, we approve the new transfer station schedule. I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
If I may, Derek, would you please put that in the paper?
The new hours? I'll get the.
That's a real.
On Thursdays. Yes, twelve to six on Thursdays have been added.
And the people that work at the transfer station, there'll be all kinds of communication when it's gonna stop, so when people. Start you first? Yes.
Starting, uh.
Starts next week at week.
Great.
Which is.
But the big one is when it's gonna stop in October. That's when they'll go in there and it's not open on Thursday and that's when they'll be the angry.
We'll have it everywhere.
Elections cleared. We have an election in June?
We have an election in May.
I'm in.
And we have an election in June. For the May election, I would like to appoint Michelle Emery, Nancy Petersons, and Allison Emery.
I make a motion to appoint those three people. I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any?
That was just for May.
That's just for May because I'm not sure in June if Allison will be available, so I will find out.
We'll do that.
So the May vote is what day?
That is May fourth, it's next week, May fourteenth. Tuesday. Mm-hmm. And we have to be eight to eight.
Where is that vote? Here? Some stairs?
No, we'll do it right here.
We can do it up here. The June one's gonna be downstairs though, so if you guys think that it'll be too confusing that we should have both downstairs up on you. But I know that the June one needs to go downstairs because the turnout will be better than the May one.
Block off the stairs to go downstairs for May.
That's what I did. That's what I do. I'll tell you. You'd be surprised. There'll be signs everywhere.
Upstairs.
There'll be signs everywhere.
Is that everything?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, the last thing that I have is not on here, but I'm just gonna try to squeeze it in. The inner report needs to be printed like as soon as possible. I've been working on all the different items and the things that I have left that need to be submitted to me are the dedication letter that's written up, the Spirit of America Awardee letter that is written up, the council, which is usually by council chair, however you guys decide to do that, that needs to be put in there. And then code enforcement, planning and appeals board, and safety committee, which are all for a guy. All of those as soon as possible. We have people asking, we really should've had it printed by now, so I'd like to have it printed by the end of the month.
You're talking about the letters that we.
That are in the, yes, I've already compiled all the other letters aside from those. I'm adding pictures for different stuff. We've done all the statistics for births and deaths and Santa and everything else has been compiled. I just need those to insert in.
Nine point six in your paper packet is my interview. And that we can cover in June. Nine point seven, similar in your packet, we do have to review and renew the police chief contract. We can do the same thing scheduled for June.
Does that, no, is that something?
I've, I've had a contract since Taylor Lee was here.
Okay.
Three year, three year?
I don't remember it.
And nine point eight is, we're talking about scheduling a workshop, talk about summer rec if you still want to do that.
Yeah, because we need to figure out how it's all gonna work. I mean, you have received the options that Zach put out, correct? No?
Probably. The email on, right, on a direction on how to ingrate it more so within the town. And we can start that process, but there are a couple of, they take some lead time to get.
How are we gonna set it up, basically? No program by financially correct and employees and all that good stuff? Whether it's a town program or a rec program.
Right. Right now what we're doing is running it still as a program the way that it has been run. So the town is act, acting as fiscal agent, so we're processing them through our payroll process. And managing their expenses as a fiscal agent, like we do with rec.
So we need a workshop to decide if they're gonna be a town employee or a rec or not a town.
If you want to incorporate it fully within the town, which would mean rolling them into the next budget cycle process as town employees with the revenues from that program coming in and the expenses coming out as a town employee.
Where do the revenues that come in from all the people that they go now?
They go into a separate account that town staff manages. So like a special revenue fund account we run for rec.
So the town's operating it anyways. So how can, how can we not have a choice? And how can there be a choice? They're, they're employees of the town. They're getting a paycheck from this town.
But they're not employees of the town legally. And that's why being appointed by the council, they're not employees of the town.
So they're getting stipends.
We're processing payroll through our.
Do we take taxes out of their money?
Form and yes, but legally they're not treated as our employees, only through the payroll process. And this is the way that it's been set up since it was set up with Dana.
I wonder if we could turn it into stipends. I wonder if we could turn it into stipends? A stipend, you take cash, you know?
Right, and we could. There's no, is it hourly or was it a stipend? It's based on what the budget was.
Right, and what happened was the director, the director was salary and everybody else was hourly.
Jay, wasn't Bill Bigford, when he used to work on the fields, wasn't he stipended by John Harley?
No.
He was not?
Well, maybe at one time after, after, maybe after the fact for a very short period of time, but I believe he, I don't know this for a fact, but I mean, I believe he was a volunteer.
What'd you say?
I believe he was a volunteer. I don't, I don't, I don't know that for a fact. I'll never remember hearing he was stipended.
My hearing that up is only, we can stipend different things.
Correct.
Yep.
And committee members, and I mean, planning board is the assistance group.
Right, Poland does that with some of their staff.
I would think we just make them stipend.
Does that cover everything?
And we were covered the way we operate it now. It would be council appointing the director of the summer program. That covers us, the way that it was founded.
So do we have, so we don't have to do anything?
Not if you want to leave it the same way, because we are, we are covered this way. But if we wanted to make it, make them town employees...
Well, I mean, if we're covered and all works, if it's not broke, why fix it?
Well, isn't the problem that what if this person goes away and then you have no one, you have no one on the interim? We need someone, we need someone to take charge when something happens, so there's no...
Then we appoint somebody else.
So that, will that be written down and the council will know and do it right away?
Well, you'd have to, just like we did now, we advertised.
Well, right, but it happened late and there's a disconnect.
I just said we advertised, we got somebody.
Right.
So if they quit or get done, I would think we would just immediately put out that we're looking for a director of the summer program, and then we'd appoint them again. Whoever the question, I don't think that we'll have to do that.
You'd hope, I said, it just wouldn't walk off the job too.
Oh, no, no, I know. Well, and Sue didn't walk off the job. She got done, she got done in February, but we didn't ever address it until April. So I don't want there to be a disconnect. I want everything to be in place so that someone is taking charge of it right from the get-go.
I'm okay with it just the way it was. If it's working and we're all covered, and we call them stipends to these people that work, the director and whoever works under them, I'm okay with it leaving it alone. I don't know about you guys.
Oh, I am too. I was wondering why it had to be so different to begin with, why we had to go through everything that we did. It's okay, I've already heard.
So, so we don't need to make a motion or anything because it's already in place.
Right, this was just if you wanted to set up a workshop.
I don't think, I don't think I need to go to workshop, but you guys want to.
So if you hung on around on the twentieth, so...
We'll just keep plugging along.
So last item is an executive session. We need a motion titled one MRSA, section four oh five six, part...
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
All those in favor?
We are back at, what time is it? Miranda, it's nine twenty-five.
All right, so say again what you want.
We would be looking for a motion to reconsider agenda item number eight point five.
I'll make a motion that we reconsider, uh, motion item eight point five. I second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous?
So we would be looking at eight point five again. We would be looking for a motion to table until the next meeting.
I would like to table motion item eight point five until June's meeting. I second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous?
Motion for the revision of the town purchasing policy regarding the sale and purchase of public-owned property as originally passed on July sixth, nineteen ninety-two.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the revised sale of public property document. Oh, I second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous?
So now we need a motion to advise him to, uh, an RFP.
Start a formal RFP?
Yeah. And if that, if that guy Dan did Hannaford and she thinks he's good, I definitely...
I'd consider him.
I'd consider him for sure.
Well, I don't know what to call this motion, so...
Motion to...
I just made it, so just...
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay.
To write the town manager to put out an RFP to collect proposals for selling Twenty-two Pleasant Street.
Yep.
And we will have those phones in back of the board and... And I was sorry.
First, second, hall of fame.
One last one.
Unanimous?
One last one. We get new ones. I still got, on mine, I have, it has John Harley, how he flushes the toilet for people.
Yes.
Number thirteen. Yeah, I noticed that when I looked that document on here and I emailed it to him.
Oh, yes, like I said, your digital ones are in your iPad. I'll send you those. So do you have a motion, Pedro?
I'll make a motion, will you, Jerry?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous?